First, there must be a sufficient demonstration that implementation of the Smart Meter Program will actually produce a net economic benefit to customers. Second, customers just be afforded a meaningful and fair opportunity to opt out of Smart Meter installation without being penalized by unwarranted and excessive costs. And whereas there have been concern expressed by some electric customers that the Smart Meters are overly intrusive into their energy usage, and whereas some electric customers have alleged that emissions from the Smart Meters are actually dangerous to their health, now therefore be it resolved that the Troy City Council supports the ability of customers to opt out of the Smart Meter Program on their homes. Be it further resolved that the Troy City Council agrees with Attorney General Schutey that utility customers who opt out of the Smart Meter Program should be able to opt out with no economic and/or other penalty. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be sent to Governor Snyder, the Oakland County delegation of the Michigan Legislature, the Michigan Attorney General, the Michigan Public Services Commission, the Michigan Association of Counties, and the Oakland County Board of Commissioners, and all elected officials in the city of Troy. May I have a second?
I'll support.
Moved by Mayor Daniels, seconded by Councilman Henderson. Discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
One of my initial questions after receiving this this afternoon to review was when this was drafted, obviously, members of council know that we received the report in our packet that was released on the 29th of June, and it was about thirty pages of report. There was some synopsis. We've heard from people speaking at public comment for the last several meetings. I've received a few emails on this, but to be honest, they seem to be mostly from people that are living outside of the community, not to say that this issue doesn't affect people that live in the community, but it does seem that the most vocal opponents or proponents have been from outside of the community. So, my concern about this particular resolution, it's not so much that I don't approve of taking a position, but I feel like this resolution, the way that it's worded, doesn't really focus on some of the issues that are in the report, and it doesn't really focus on some of the issues that we heard from people that came to speak with us. I noticed that it really tags two topics that are listed here, whether the electric utility intends to allow customers to opt out of having a Smart Meter, and the second one, that's how the utility intends to recover the cost of an opt-out program if one will exist, when we know from reading the report that there were nine issues that they were asking for input on. And one of the ones that I guess I do feel strongly about, if we're going to have a discussion and consider putting forward a resolution, is one that was brought up tonight, and it's one that was in the report as well, and that is kind of the lack of education or consumer outreach that has been done, because I think one of the big problems that I'm seeing on this issue is that there's a lot of information out there, and there's a lot of misinformation, I think, that's out there, and I don't really know if the utilities have done a good job of educating people to really make a decision about opting out. So, my concern is with some of the wording in this particular resolution, I don't know how tied you are to this resolution. I wasn't sure how you ended up drafting it, or if there were certain things in here that you felt really strongly, but I feel like it could be a little bit more well-rounded if we were going to send something up there. And I think the other thing that came from the report was that they haven't really made a decision on what to do about the costs, and that's an issue that they're still going to be investigating and making some recommendations on. So, I would be a little bit concerned about tying us as a body, and thus, you know, speaking for the community, about opting out of anything that has to do with cost. I know one person came up tonight and spoke that they shouldn't be penalized if other people are going to choose to use the Smart Meter, thus saving everyone millions of dollars. Well, I'm sure that on the flip side, other people could look at it from, they don't want to be penalized for the people that decide not to use the Smart Meters and are thus not saving that money. So, I'm a little concerned about putting that component in about the cost, and I think if we're going to send something up, I'd like it to include some of the other concerns, you know, requiring that the utilities provide some sort of comprehensive public outreach. I think that that's really important, and it's something that I see that's lacking. So, I would be willing to consider something if we could tweak it, but this, as it's written, I don't know if I could support it, because I feel like it's missing some of the things that I would really like to send up and have the legislature hear, so.
Thank you for your comments. I just wanted to remind you, this was drafted specifically in accordance with what was passed by the Oakland County Commissioners, Democrats and Republicans alike. It passed twenty-five to nothing, twenty-five to zero, excuse me. So, this is an exact duplicate. It offers the residents an opportunity to opt out, and of course, there's plenty of time for discussion and development of other resources and other opportunities to explore what the extent of this process is, but I think people would like to have the ability to opt out at this point and know that the city council supports that freedom. Are there other comments?
About two years ago, I remember the day, it was a Saturday, and DTE came up to my front door, knocked, and asked if I'd like a Smart Meter, and foolishly, at the time, I said, "Yeah." And I have had no adverse effects, as far as I know, from having one of those meters on my house, nor have I noticed an increase in my electric bill or any of those things. I've read almost all the literature that's been sent our way, and there's been a lot of it, starting back in January, because I think that's the first phone call I got from one of the speakers tonight regarding Smart Meters. So, you know, I'm not a "the sky is falling" kind of a guy. I posted something on my blog, trying to get some feedback from the community as to what, you know, maybe they had concerns and issues, and, you know, I really, it's a coin flip for me. But what I like about this are the two paragraphs towards the end, that Troy City Council supports the ability of customers to opt out of the Smart Meter Program, and that we agree with Attorney General that utility customers opt out of the Smart Meter Program should be able to opt out with no economic or any other penalty. As with any other consumer good, I don't want to have to have it forced on me. I would love to have the option. Had I known two years ago, when I had this unit installed on the house, all the controversy, I may have had another opinion as to whether or not I would have it installed on my home. Again, not being a "sky is falling" kind of a person, I just think it's good for the people of Troy to be able to say yes or no on the thing.
Other comments? Councilman Slater?
I agree with Councilwoman, or Mayor Proton McGinnis, that this appears to be somewhat dated, a dated resolution, and it's, to me, it's not a current resolution that we should be looking at. I am completely in favor of opting out. I think that is what the report said. I think the report said that they were going to allow an opt-out, and I think that's great. I don't think this should get forced on anybody, and I think the opt-out is a good thing. A couple of things for the city attorney, if I could. When I read this resolution in paragraph three, where it says that Attorney General Schutey made, there's two quotes, a first and a second. The second says that the customers just be afforded a meaningful and fair opportunity to opt out of Smart Meter installation without being penalized by unwarranted and excessive costs. And then, in the second to the last paragraph, it quotes Attorney General Schutey, but it says that they should be able to opt out with no economic or any other penalty. That's a little different to me. If we're going to quote him, that's, to me, that's a little different. I certainly agree that they shouldn't be penalized by unwarranted and excessive costs, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it should be, then you say there should be no economic penalty. So, there's going to be a cost, somewhere, somewhere. Do you have any information about that, about how the cost is going to be determined, first of all, and then I have a follow-up question, if I could?
Mayor, if I may, there is a report that is in your packet, and that was, basically, the Michigan Public Service Commission did issue its report, and that is, again, twenty-nine pages. We have a summary of it, that was done by our intern, and, again, we don't pretend to know half as much as what the Public Service Commission does and all of the experts that have testified in front of the Public Service Commission. However, we did do some research based on a consensus of council at the last time you wanted to see what this report said, so we did do a little bit of research. And from what I can tell, the costs have not yet been ascertained, but there will be costs, and those costs will be things like, they, you know, the new meters are replacing obsolete meters. Well, if you, if they break down, you have to have a supply of the obsolete meters. You also have to pay for the meter readers to go to each house, whereas if you have the Smart Meters, there is no meter reader that you have to pay for. There are recording of the houses that have chosen to opt out. That would be a cost. All of those things would be taken into consideration by the Public Service Commission, again, assuming that they adopt the Commission's staff report, and I want to make sure that that's really clear. The report that's in your agenda packets is the staff recommendation. The Public Service Commission has not yet issued an opinion on this matter. I expect that they will issue opinion fairly quickly, but until that happens, there is a moratorium, so no Smart Meters are being put in homes, on homes, at this point, because there is a moratorium. But, again, the issue of what that cost will be, I suspect will involve a lot of hearings where the utility companies will need to bring forth the evidence and what it's going to cost them, you know, to take care of, you know, having these obsolete meters and keeping them on hand, and keeping people trained in the repair of them and all of that. So, I expect that that will be at a later time, that they will ascertain that.
Could I follow up?
Councilman Slater?
And do you know, at this point, how many Smart Meters are in Troy, at this point?
I believe that they are about ninety-eight percent completely installed in the city of Troy. I believe that that's the figure, ninety-eight percent.
I haven't gotten one complaint from anybody that lives in the city, but I certainly think they should have an opt-out provision, but I think if we're going to quote the Attorney General in a resolution, it shouldn't be conflictive in one paragraph or another. I'm very comfortable with where it says installation without being penalized by unwarranted or excessive costs. And if that could be tweaked into the same language down in the other one, I think I'd be okay, but I agree with Mayor Proton McGinnis that there should be some education, you know. I think we should ask them to educate the public, too, because that seems to be a problem. And, you know, if it takes, maybe if we could delay this to the next council meeting and maybe tweak this a little bit, I'd feel more comfortable. I'm okay with the opt-out provision, but if we could just tweak it a little bit, I'd feel better.
Councilman Fleming?
The people that spoke tonight reference two House bills, state House bills now, 5411 and 5439. I don't know if, what the timing of these bills being brought forward are, if we don't do this tonight, if we're going to not get this resolution prior to those being voted on, I doubt it. Our next meeting is not until July the 23rd, I believe. Okay? So, my question is, does our city attorney know the timing for these House bills, when they might be addressed? If we don't do it tonight, are we going to miss the opportunity to get this resolution before, to the state, before they vote?
And I'm not sure, if you were going to tweak this, and again, I, you know, I don't, whatever a majority of council decides to do, but if you were going to tweak it, then we could perhaps put some language in here specifically referencing those bills, and, again, provide a summary of what those bills say to the city council, and we'd be happy to do that in the next packet, agenda packet. I don't suspect that anything is going to be done with the bills by our next meeting, especially in light of the fact that it's the summertime. I think that you're pretty safe.
Okay. Swat of the floor.
Councilman Teetz?
I mean, we can delay, and, I mean, we've already delayed two weeks, and this was going to be in the regular agenda, but it was just an oversight that wasn't included in the initial agenda. My thought is, if there's concern about the quote by the Attorney General in that whereas clause, we could certainly strike that and move on from there, and as far as an individual utility, whether they should do education, shouldn't do edu, or should or shouldn't do education, I leave that up to the business and their stockholders and what they think is best for their company. I don't think, I know how to manage a utility company, and so I'm not going to tell them as much, but I will advocate on behalf of those people that do want to opt out and give them the opportunity to do so, and also advocate that they shouldn't be penalized for that. So, I'd like to offer the amendment, just to strike the third whereas, and that whereas is the, whereas it says, whereas Michigan Attorney General Schutey, in his comments, et cetera. Do you see that? Okay. To strike that, and then leave the rest of the amendment as is. And then to bring it forth for vote tonight, get your name, and we can move on from there.
Thank you. Mayor Proton McGinnis?
I don't think that, I don't think you've spoken on this.
Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, he's. We did, okay. I would have to say the opposite, because I think if we're looking at something that's a quote, and I'm assuming that that came directly from somewhere where those are statements that the Attorney General made, I would be more comfortable leaving in whatever he was quoted as saying than where we've paraphrased that, and the paraphrase doesn't quite seem to match up.
Madam Mayor, I would, I apologize, because I should, I should say then we should also strike the Attorney General at the bottom, I mean, for the sake of it being all the same.
Both?
Well, let's just strike out, let me read it. Be it further resolved that the Troy City Council believes that those utility customers who opt out of the Smart Meter Program should be able to opt out with no economic or other penalty, that the Troy City Council believes, and striking the words agrees with the Attorney General. So, I'd like to make those amendments linked together.
I'm sorry, I, could you, Councilman, or, Councilman Teetz, could you?
Finish up what you were saying.
So, to strike the words agrees with Attorney General, and replacing that with the word believes, and like to link that with the other amendment that I offered.
So, you want to remove the whereas third paragraph completely, and then revise the be it further resolved?
First, be it further resolved.
Right, right. Councilman Campbell?
Rather than rewrite this on the fly up here, I would certainly like to spend a little bit more time, let the city attorney write up properly, put the House bill information together, and put a resolution that's going to make sense rather than us wordsmithing this up here on the council. I think it's better for the people in Troy, and it's certainly going to be better for us to get a, put a good document out. Not that yours wouldn't be great, but I mean, just in case.
I support that. I don't like doing things at the table like this personally.
Councilman Henderson?
I suppose the city attorney gave us a little bit of information that we didn't have before, that's that the city of Troy has ninety-eight percent of the households already installed with these, so are we, if we, are we shutting the gate after the horse got out, and are we simply drafting this to send a message to the state that, you know, we're just, we are with all other communities, and that we want a little better response from the business community?
I think that that's a fair assessment, that we're basically standing with the people, saying that if they choose to opt out, they can. I actually, I actually think that Councilman Campbell has some good points in terms of drafting it with these state resolutions. However, Councilman Henderson just made a very good point, saying, being as we're ninety-eight percent installed, it's almost too late to make a lot of additional, take a lot of additional time of our city attorney to draft a new resolution. I think that with Councilman Teetz's recommendations, removing that third paragraph, and then changing the agrees with Attorney General Schutey, changing it to believes, makes it a very simple, very straightforward, just a recognition and acknowledgement that we do indeed stand with the people who want to opt out of the program. I would say we could vote on this simple resolution now, and if, on an individual basis, any one of us wishes to pursue the education and the development, we could do that on our time, so.
I believe I have an amendment on the floor at this point.
Okay, well, I'll second your amendment. Discussion?
Yes.
Councilman?
Just want to make sure to understand the amendment that Councilman Teetz has. I like the third paragraph, if it's a fact. I agree with what you're saying in the be it resolved that Troy City Council believes that utility customers who opt out of the Smart Meter Program should be able to opt out with no economic or other penalty. I like that, but is there a reason why we need to take out the third paragraph totally, rather than just leave it in and just do the second amendment? And the other point I'd like to make is, even though ninety-eight percent of Troy has already had the Smart Meters, there may be people with a little education that want them off, so this would be something that the state legislature could look at possibly, but we can't control that here, and give these people an option to take them off if they want, and maybe with better education, some people would make that option if there was no penalty.
Councilman Henderson?
Along those lines, I don't see that as an option in here. All I see is an option to opt out. I don't see the option where, you know, if I didn't like mine on my house, I can call DTE and say, "Come get your unit," and put the old one back on, or similar old one. Should that be addressed in this sort of document?
That makes sense. Councilman Slater?
Well, I do think that makes sense, and I think that's why, maybe we could give our ideas to the city attorney, and she could draft something for us in two weeks that would make more sense to everybody. I don't like doing it like this, and everybody has some good ideas. Why don't we give our ideas to the city attorney and do this right? So, I cannot support the amendment. I think the third paragraph is the most important paragraph, maybe in the whole document. So, I, I'm not going to vote for the amendment. I would make a motion to postpone the resolution for two weeks and allow all members of council to give their ideas to the city attorney, who will then draft a new resolution for the next meeting.
Is there a second?
I believe the amendment has precedent. Am I incorrect?
If you postpone it, then it would postpone the amendment and the original.
All right. There's a motion to postpone the resolution. Second, moved by Councilman Slater, seconded by Mayor Proton McGinnis. Discussion? Councilman Fleming?
I could go either way, but if I think if we can get unanimous support from this council to send a resolution, if we have to wait two weeks, Councilman Teetz, I'm, I wouldn't do that, but we have to get this done on the 23rd to get this before the, before the state legislature. So, to get unanimous support, I would go along with the postpone.
I support that as well. You know, we need to be unanimous on this, get this out on a timely basis, but it needs to include all the elements that we've talked about here tonight, and I don't think this addresses all possible.
A vote please on the motion to postpone.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
No.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll postpone the resolution to the next regularly scheduled meeting, July 23rd. Next on the agenda is council comments. Does anyone have council comments they would like to make? All right. Do we want to take a break, or just go through the reports? I'm sorry, Councilman Teetz, did you want to make council comments?
You bet. Heard what I talked about at the last meeting, as far as trying to get a hold of, and making sure that the city gets its priorities as far as what the taxpayers expect, in the same way allowing the public the opportunity to address the city council. I put together some ideas. I've talked to one other council member about it, and picked their mind, and essentially would be this. The change would be, during the current public comment section, people would comment only on those things that are on the agenda. So, for instance, if someone wanted to speak tonight about one of their liquor licenses, they would simply go up to the podium and say, "I'd like to speak about K3," or whatever the correct number it is. They would be allowed three minutes to give their comments. They could comment on one thing or six things in that three minutes and give their thoughts. We would ask that the residents, say if they're a resident, a non-resident, or a business owner that may live in a different city but have a business here in Troy. And then later, after, or after the business of the meeting, but before council referrals, have an opportunity for those people that would like to speak on an issue that is not on the agenda to speak then. The reason why doing it before council referrals is if someone would come in and say, for instance, whenever it's two inches rain or more, my basement is flooding because of the ditches are messed up, or something like that, we could immediately address that with the management and go through that process. Again, we'd ask that the speakers announce whether they're a resident, a non-resident, or own a business in the city of Troy. And, again, comments would be limited to three minutes, with two, two small things. The first being, citizen could speak at both times, so for instance, if you want to talk about the liquor issue, and then later you want to talk about this or that issue, that would be fine. And then the second thing, obviously, when they're speaking on items on the agenda, to speak on items on the agenda. I think this reform would help the city get to the business of monitoring and managing the city's business. I think sometimes our meetings are getting into more of a public, I don't know what the right word is. I think we need to focus more on what's actually on the agenda and what we're here to do. I think this is a very simple, a common sense reform, and I think it still allows anyone that wants to speak about whatever subject to have that opportunity. So, I bring this forward for the council to give me a sense of their interest or not, and then we can certainly ask the clerk, the city attorney, the city manager to put together whatever language would be appropriate inside the rules of procedure. So, with that said, I will let someone else talk.
Discussion? Councilman Campbell?
I understand now what you're asking for is to change the rules. Right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're going to change the rules, and I think what we have to do is we have to have a study session to go through the rules, because there's some other rules that could do some work as well. So, I would support this, but I'm not, I don't want to support it on the one item that you're talking about. I will support having a study session to go back through the rules and get us back on course for the whole set of rules, rather than just one item, because there are some other issues we'd like to talk about.
Councilman Henderson?
I support both those ideas, and further to that, it just seems that at the, at the end of public comment, we should just stop. If they've signed up, they can talk. It seems like once one person gets up and starts firing at various people, it just sparks two or three other people to come up and throw barbs at each other. I think, A, it extends the meetings extraordinarily long, and B, it's unproductive, as we're trying to create a more civil discourse in the city of Troy. So, I would try to put that in there as well.
Madam Mayor?
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
I think Councilman Henderson is stealing my thoughts this evening, but I agree that I would like to have this discussion. Councilman Teetz and I did toss this idea around, and I think what he's trying to do is streamline the way that we're doing business, make us really effective. I do think that it will take stronger leadership from the council as a whole, because we can all call point of order if something seems out of order, but in order to determine what is and is not on the agenda, someone could easily sign up and say they want to speak to us on liquor licensing, and then say three sentences on liquor licensing, and go off and talk about something else, and we really have to be able to not regulate in a negative way, because we're trying to avoid that, but regulate in a way that these are our rules, we've changed them, this is why we've changed them, and we're going to follow them. But I think it would be helpful if we did it in a study session format, one- in a study session format, one, because I think we can brainstorm a little bit better that way, um, and have more open dialogue, uh, when we're sitting across the table, rather than staring out at the audience, um, and not each other. But I think that there are a couple of different things that might be helpful, um, for us to discuss, and one of the things that I had thought about bringing up in that discussion was finding a way to, um, utilize a system that we have in place, so people can sign up, they know when they're going to be speaking. Um, you know, I even thought about perhaps the idea of, uh, looking to see if there's a way that people can check a box to let us know if they're a resident, a visitor, or business owner, so we have more information about who we're hearing from when we're making our decisions. But those are all things I think would be better suited for a discussion in a study session. Um, and also, I think by setting aside a special study session to let the community know, this is what we're talking about. Um, we may be changing some of our rules of procedure. Obviously, making a change like the one that Councilman Henderson's suggesting is something that we would have to bring education along with as well, because otherwise we'll get an onslaught of people coming, not knowing that we've changed the rules, even though you'll probably have to announce it at the beginning, along with the other statements. But we want to make sure that people know every step of the way, what we're thinking about doing, why we're thinking about doing it, and then put it into effect that way. So, um, I would absolutely be up for a study session on this and be able to consider all the things that we're talking about tonight, and have us all come prepared. So if there are things that we see that may need fixing, uh, we can all discuss it, you know, with plenty of notice, rather than doing it tonight.
Counselman Fleming?
I agree with everything you said, and I think we need to expedite this and schedule the study session at the next council meeting, which is July the 23rd, following the council meeting.
I support that.
Okay. I think there's common agreement, so I, we don't have to take a vote on this.
Let's go do it.
We'll have a study session on the next regularly scheduled meeting, July 23rd. Are there any other council comments?
Can I just ask the city attorney to think about some legal issues?
Absolutely. Um, we'll be prepared as, as much as we can be, but I, I will reserve the right to maybe research some of the issues if, if necessary.
Okay. We now move to reports. I'm sorry.
Have another.
Counsel comment?
A follow-up on what Counselman Henderson brought up about the fireworks. I think it is getting out of control. I believe this will run its course, but I'm hearing fireworks after midnight, and I'm getting complaints from residents. And, um, I think that this council should put forth a resolution to the governor and the state legislature as well. And I think it's a state issue, because they're regulating this, they, they opened it up. And just a couple of things that I would recommend that we put in the resolution, if the council concurs, agrees with me, that, uh, one, we set specific dates as to when fireworks could be, dates and times, as when fireworks could be used in the city, or throughout the state, actually. And also maybe some, um, uh, guidelines on the age of people that are, can use fireworks of certain classes. Those big mortars that go up in the air, I don't think a, a four-year-old should be lighting those, but, uh, should be some parental discretion. But those would be my two suggestions. If we, if the council wants, uh, legal to, to draft something, a resolution that we'd, we'd, we'd prove would be dates and times around, surrounding holidays specifically, and then maybe a restriction on the age of certain classes of fireworks.
The state, um, legislation actually does restrict us from, um, enacting legislation regarding the use any, uh, on 30 days. There's a day before and a day after, 10 national holidays that the state is saying are, um, days when people can, um, use fireworks without legislation or without ordinance. We are allowed to make ordinance on the other 335 days, or 325 days, excuse me, 335 days. And, um, I think that actually, having read the state legislation, I think that it needs to, um, be known to the state that the cities can't afford to regulate fireworks, uh, uh, usage without support, monetary support from the state. They've, they've enacted a great deal of legislation on the, um, on the distribution and the sale of the fireworks, but then they've more or less just left the use portion of it to the cities. And I don't think that it's a good idea to have Warren writing one resolution for times or dates, and then Sterling Heights writing another resolution for times and dates. And so the person leaves Warren and crosses over to Sterling Heights, and Troy residents are bothered by all of them, because we're close by. So it really seems to me as though this is a state issue that needs to be resolved properly at the state level. Attorney Bloom?
Mayor, if I may, just, um, I'm going to use this as an opportunity to provide just a little bit of education to the public, because, um, we have received a, a number of calls, and I'm sure that, that Chief Mayor will also, um, provide some insight to this as well. But, um, yes, it is true that there is a new state law, um, that does basically allow for the sale of these greater, um, powered fireworks. Um, and we really do not have the ability to do much regulation, other than they have to comply with what our current ordinances provide for. Um, however, we do have some ordinances that, um, if applicable, we could enforce them. So I just want to make sure that that's out there, that the public knows that we do have disturbing the peace ordinances, um, and we do have loud conduct ordinances. We do also, um, in the state law, there's a prohibition from, uh, igniting them on religious properties, religious organizational properties, public property, school property, or the property of another without permission. So, um, condominium complexes or apartment complexes may wish to, uh, you know, pass something that would prohibit them, you know, persons from, uh, discharging fireworks on their own property. And that would not be limited to, um, the, the days that are non-holidays. The holidays, as you've, you've spoken of, Mayor, are the day before a, a national holiday, the day of, and the day after. Um, but there are some things that can be done. Um, again, enforcement might be a little bit difficult to find the person who's actually discharging the fireworks. Um, also, you cannot sell to minors. Um, there's nothing in the state law that speaks to whether or not minors can discharge the fireworks. But if there is a consensus of council, um, we're happy to bring back something for council. We just would need to know what that is, and we're happy to, to bring it back to you. If you want to do a resolution to the state, that's also an excellent idea. There are some holes in, in this ordinance, or in the state law. We'd be happy to do that, but we just would need to know what is the consensus of city council. And I don't know if you do that, uh, through a study session, or if that's something that, you know, I don't know how you want to provide that direction to us, if, if that's something you want to pursue.
Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry. Counsel, uh, Mayor Potomac Guinness?
I, I can't speak for the rest of council. I know that we, as council members, received feedback, um, from members in the community, aside from our own presence in the community and witnessing, um, the fireworks and the difference between this year and, and last year, years before. Um, I, I think that there's probably going to be consensus from council that we want to look at this a little bit more closely. Um, I think that ultimately the resolution is probably a, a good idea, because if it's something that we can agree on as a body, um, we're speaking for the community, what we think is important, and we send that up to Lansing, um, so we can speak on behalf of our 80,000-plus residents, um, about what we think is important for our community. But I think we probably need a little bit more information, and you touched on some things that I think would be good to give us in terms of, obviously, we know what the law is. There are some nuances that maybe we were not familiar with, but some of the holes that you're speaking of, um, probably would be important for, for you to point out from your legal perspective, uh, so that we can kind of address those. So I, I think maybe, um, just putting some of that informational items together, putting, putting some of those together to give them to us to then make a decision to go forward might be helpful. I don't know if there are specific things that other members from council, uh, that other members of council would like, but, um, perhaps it would start with kind of providing us some sort of informational background in writing about what you think some of the key issues would be. I know that you and I spoke about this year and everything coming into place, and kind of assuming that, um, that the laws that were being changed would reflect some of these concerns that we're having within the community, and then lo and behold, it's the day of or the day before the holiday, and we're realizing that really some of those issues are not addressed, and we didn't have the ability to deal with them, other than, um, our fine police department that probably dealt with a lot of disturbing the peace complaints, uh, over the last week. So we appreciate you for that. But, um, I think probably putting together some of that general information and giving it to us as a report might be a place to start, so then we can go from there.
Counselman Slater?
I, I support that, but, um, if, if I could ask, could we, um, get something on the webpage, um, to educate the, the people, what they can do? I know we have quite a few ordinances on the books, and I don't think people should think that, that those can't be enforced. Uh, they've, they've always been on the books for us for fireworks for as long as those ordinances have been around. So if we could put something on the webpage, I, I would ask for that, to educate, uh, the public, some kind of fireworks header or something, what you can do. Who to call? And I, I agree with the mayor that, you know, this is pretty typical, I think, of the state legislators, that they do things, they throw it out there, and they forget to, to loot, do all the little loopholes, and they expect us to be the ones to bear the, the burden for what they do. So I, I support a resolution to the state legislators, tell them to, to fix, to fix this law, so that, um, we at the local level don't have to be the ones to bear the burden of the enforcement, and to, um, as Councilman Fleming brought up, how could you draft a law like this and not think about the use, you know, small children, uh, using these things and buying them and things of that nature? So I would support some information to give us the ability to put together a resolution, to send back to Lansing, and tell them to do a better job, because we're the ones that are bearing the burden from, um, what they failed to do, in my opinion.
Counselman Henderson?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, some of the information that I'd like to see going forward is, you know, being a rookie community and, uh, being able to blow off fireworks, uh, what the last two weeks has brought us in terms of maybe injuries, fires, and whatnot, because that's, in, in the email that I've gotten from, uh, community members, you know, they bring up those points. Uh, do we have some preliminary information?
Good evening, Chief Mayor.
Evening, Mayor. Uh, we do have some preliminary information on that. We didn't go back two weeks. We took the week, uh, around the Fourth of July, so the four days. And for the number of calls for service that we had is pretty much the same as what we had last year. Now, the difference is, is we had an increase of 300 phone calls into our communications center. So in talking to the people, we can track the data and know how many calls we got. We don't know what each of those calls are. We can't keep track of all those phone calls and all the data. The, uh, information from talking to people that work at the communications section is, is many of those calls, most of those calls, were people calling and asking for clarification on the law, and what was going on with that. So we explained to them. So you balance those two out. We had 300 more calls for cer, calls, but the calls for service related to fireworks remain the same, essentially, as last year. So once we explain to people that it's a law, there's nothing that could be done in regard to those time periods, uh, around the Fourth of July, because of the state law, overriding anything we could do, there was nothing we could do. So people understood that, from our standpoint.
Follow-up. So what we're saying, the increase in phone calls and the people having concerns about noise, uh, doesn't equate to necessarily blown off fingers, house fires?
We had two brush fires that were reported to be, or grass fires, that reported to be caused from fireworks. We had no injuries that we're aware of, that reported to us, or we checked with our health, our, uh, emergency services provider, and they had nothing either. So we didn't have anything in our town related to injuries from fireworks. There were two that were, like I said, there were two grass fires that were confirmed from fireworks, and two grass fires that they assumed were fireworks, but the fire department couldn't confirm as fireworks. So there's four grass fires in that time period. So we've got lots of numbers in relation to those, to those days, but I think the summary I gave you captures the flavor of that. There's, there's another aspect in regards to, from our police department perspective with the fireworks, and that is with the change in what these are, the explosive nature of them. It changes under the storage capability we had. We used to be able to take fireworks in, throw them in a garbage can filled with water, and we'd confiscate them. We can't do that anymore. According to what the predicament the state has put us in, we have to have a structure called a magazine, which is blast proof, and has all these other requirements to it, which we're not prepared to, we don't have that facility. So we were not confiscating fireworks, because we have nowhere to store them. Uh, we can't comply with the law. So it's one of those unintended, I'm sure it's an unintended consequence, but no one thought through, where are you supposed to store these things? Uh, the other angles we'll, we'll address, there's going to be storage issues in other structures that I, I know the fire department's more concerned with. It's their venue for sales, and where these things are sold, and the type of establishments with that, that's out of our realm. But I know those are safety concerns. Does that answer your questions?
Yep, you're good. Thank you.
Counselman Teetz?
For, for grass fires, I mean, it was really dry. Is that a factor? I mean, my, my lawn was pretty burnt by then. I mean...
I'm not a firefighter, but I'm going to go on the lemons, assume that those were.
I mean, um...
It's just that they were related, the two were related from fireworks.
Fireworks that sparked the grass?
Yes. And it's, some of the ordinances we had that would cover that would be like the littering and other aspects. It's, what we had to do is relook at how we would enforce this, and it isn't direct, like we used to be able to do, with just say fireworks. So now we got to look at other, you know, disturbing the peace and littering. Seems kind of redundant to charge them with littering for lighting fireworks. It should be more direct.
Chief Mayor, just a pub, a personal opinion. Have you had complaints throughout the year for other holidays? I was kind of concerned that all of a sudden, these 10 holidays are now set aside for fireworks. I don't recall fireworks being used on other holidays than Fourth of July.
Over the years, it's become a lot more prevalent, where there's a lot more fireworks going on in the area. Uh, nowhere near what we saw this year, because of the, the volume and the noise. I mean, they're, they're a lot more, uh, have a lot more explosive capability, a lot more volume. You got things, the mortar rounds that can project into the air and then ignite with light and loud sound, so there is a difference with that. There is a difference with that.
Well, I think the legislation is just going to increase the, uh, the, uh, noise problem. Obviously, now if we have legislation that says it's okay to, to, uh, blow off fireworks on, uh, Martin Luther King Day and, and Christmas, and I, it, it just seems like we're, we're, we're putting the, uh, the, the problem ahead of the demand. I don't know. I would like to have seen it limited to Fourth of July. But that's just my comment. Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor?
Counselman Teetz?
So, I guess the question is, are we looking to send something to Lansing, or enact a local ordinance, or a little column A, a little column B? And, um, that's, I've, I think I've heard both. Is that the case?
My preference is to send it back to Lansing, myself. Mayor, I mean, um, don't look at calling, whoever you are. Attorney Bloom?
Mayor, what I, um, I thought that the consensus was for me to bring back a report, and then that can address some options that you might have. And I'm happy to do that. I think we can get that done for this next agenda, because I know that you probably want to act on this, uh, as, as quickly as possible. Uh, in the meantime, I'm sure that Mr. Culpepper, um, and his staff will work with us on maybe getting something out there that, again, says you can't be intoxicated, uh, you can't buy them if you're a minor, you can't discharge them on public property, religious property, all of those other things, and that we do have disturbing the peace, and we do have, um, other, uh, ordinances that may cover the conduct that's occurring.
Okay. Counselman Fleming?
Hey, just to follow up, Counselman Teetz, what I'm hearing is both as well. I started this with a resolution to send to the state, but if there's something that we can do as a city that gives the, the police more authority than they have now, then I would be in favor of that as well, for regulating these fireworks. But, uh, I started this just with the state, but, uh, if the rest of the council wants to approach it from both angles, I'm fine with that as well. I don't know if we can do the, the latter. If we can do more as a local municipality than we can do recommending with the state.
Attorney Bloom?
Mayor, it, it's very possible that you can enact some ordinances, or, you know, strengthen what you have, but you'd need to have consensus on how that's accomplished. So I thought that the first step would be to kind of bring it to you, and then you can give me direction, and then we can bring a proposed ordinance back, if that's what council chooses to do. Uh, the resolution, we could bring back as well.
I would like to see, uh, something addressing the funding of this enforcement. I think one of the reasons why the state did this
one of the reasons why the state did this to begin with is to generate income and I would think that they should consider sending some of that income to the cities to enforce these new fireworks legislations. So I would like to see that.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Teetz?
Last thing, in whatever research you're able to compile, I'd be very interested to know what other municipalities are doing. I know Warren has had a lot of controversy about what they have or haven't passed there and I'm not very familiar with it. So I'd be really curious about what we're looking at.
So that's already been done?
Great. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to reports. Do council have any comments or suggestions? I wanted to acknowledge a couple of the letters of appreciation given to Police Chief Gary Mayer for his significant contribution as co-chair of the Oakland County Tactical Response Committee and his Sergeant Ostrowski and Lieutenant Gordon as members of that same Oak Tech. I really think that you continue to make us proud and would like to again repeat the fact that I have no intention to eliminate the Troy Police Department. Also, I thought that congratulations are in order for the elections of Alan Neal and Glenn Clark as chair and vice chair respectively of the Zoning Board of Appeals. And there's also a notice of a public hearing to be held on July 11th, 2012 for the Detroit Edison Company to carry over its 2011 net over recovery of $23.4 million to be used as a beginning balance for their 2012 reconciliation. There's a phone number that you could call if you'd like more information about that. It's 517-241-6180. Are there any other comments on the reports? There's no closed sessions. We are going to have, or considering having a study session on the city manager brochure. Councilman Fleming had asked that we could have a study session. Is there agreement?
Agreed.
Okay. So I will call for a study session and that ends this portion of our meeting. I want to thank each and every one in the audience and at home for your participation in our legislative process. If you wish to join us in the council boardroom, you're welcome to. And otherwise, have a good evening. We hope to see you all again soon.
Attorney Blom, would you like to take over?
Thank you, Mayor. And I know that this was, this is the position profile. It's a draft that was sent to us and again, I know it was just sent to you this morning. Some of you worked during the day and so you may not have gotten an opportunity to read through it, but this is the document that would go to all of the prospective candidates. And so it would be very helpful if there is a consensus on what you want the prospective candidates to have. It does go through different sections and I don't know how you, I don't know what method council wants to take to go over this, but it is nineteen pages long, so. But the page eighteen, I would just note, that's the position advertisement. And that has already been posted, so I wanted to make sure that even if it has been posted, certainly anybody who responds to the position advertisement, they're going to want the more detail, detailed analysis of the city and also some of the qualifications that the candidates would need to have in order to be considered a viable candidate. And also kind of a detailed discussion about issues that the new city manager would be facing. So again, Mayor, I'm not sure how you wanted to deal with this, but I think the first item to talk about is the position profile. And if we can get consensus, then we can start distributing that to all the prospective candidates and also get it posted on the webpages and get it out there as much as we can. Also, Mayor, there are other things that we probably should talk about concerning this whole search process and city manager, Koppupper, has had some experience with that and we have a couple of things that we would like to talk to you about that worked for him in Auburn Hills and council may want to consider, which is a little bit of a deviation from our past process as well.
Do you want to do that now, Mayor? Or do you want to do that?
I thought that you possibly wanted-
I'd like to deal with the qualifications before we get into how we're going to process. I asked for this study session, I'm sure all of you've read this, but I had an opportunity to read it a couple of times. The first time through, I thought, you know, it's great, then I sat back and looked at it as a candidate with Mike from the private sector versus the public sector and I thought, why wouldn't he put my application in if I was in the private sector and looked at this? If we could work backwards just for a second, if you indulge me on the position advertisement, it's fine, as written. My only comment on that is where is this going to be posted and websites and so forth? Because if we're saying we want to not exclude the private sector and military, then we need to put this in places, this position advertisement, in places where they're most likely to see it. If you go to the MML and ICMA, a private sector person is not going to see it. I wouldn't see it, but we need to look and maybe recommend, see where they're posting this and maybe make some recommendations and open for suggestions to where this position advertisement might be placed. That's just my comment and then I'll stop and talk about that and I got a couple of others.
And Mayor, certainly if anyone has suggestions as to where to place it, Ms. Sears may have some suggestions with that. Certainly it's already posted on the ICMA website.
Sure.
I believe that it's going to MML, will certainly be posted on our own city's webpage. Suggestion, I think Councilman Teague said Crane's could turn business potentially be some, you know, a place. Now again, that's going to be a little more expensive. You may not want it running for four weeks, you may just want it running for a week or two, just in order to save costs, but certainly if council, this is an opportunity for council to provide direction and consensus as to where you'd like to see this listed.
I think Army Times would be a good publication and I assume all branches of the military would have a similar.
I think so. There's a Department of Defense, I mean, you know, if we were going to go all military, we would just approach the Department of Defense and see if we can advertise-
There's a publication or something rather than going one by one.
I, Councilman Funny, you made a real quick statement there that if you read, you read this the first time, you looked pretty good, you read it the second time, you said you wouldn't apply. Now assuming that the reason that you're saying that is the issues facing the position, is that the areas that you're having problems with?
If, on page fifteen, everything's okay in the beginning until I get to page fifteen and you might just take the other thing, but when I look at experience, education is not a problem, education professional development, I think that's pretty generic, sounds good. But when I get to the experience, there are two points here that just jumped right out at me. The second paragraph, extensive working knowledge of municipal accounting and financial management, public safety, public works and utilities, public policy development, human resource management, business recruitment, retention practice, and intergovernmental relations. You tell me somebody that's got strictly, you know, private sector experience, they'll look at it, well, I don't have that experience. Then you go down to bullet point number five, experience working with state legislatures and administrative agencies to maximize funding opportunities and protect cities' interests. Unless you've been in the public sector, you probably wouldn't have that one. So you look at the experience qualifications, you got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine, and two of them, you say, well, I'm not qualified there. Is that enough for a person that even though it may be in a private sector publication to turn them on, is my point. I mean, you're in the private sector, what would you do if you saw this?
Well, the area like the legislature, I think anybody who is in charge of a public business does have that interface with the government, you have to, whether it be, you always have the IRS that you talk to, but you always talk to your state legislature, look for funding for projects, stuff for the city offices for your company. So I mean, there is, at a certain level, for the right company, not every company certainly.
Yeah.
As far as the municipality, county, you know, I just, at the end of the day, accounting's accounting, right? One-on-one's going to be two, whether you work for a city or whether you work for a private company. And in the space of most people who are an executive in a public company are not the guys who are doing the finance. They may know a little bit about finance, but they certainly have a staff that are the financial people. So, I know what you're saying, it definitely does not flag out, hey, if you're in the military or the private sector, come see us. It certainly doesn't say that.
Yeah, but it says, Mr. Campbell, it's not saying working knowledge, it said extensive working knowledge of municipal accounting, financial management, public safety, public works and utilities, public, public, public.
I'm trying to say it's gone more near to public, huh?
That's my point. And I think this is all good, but I think we shouldn't write it to exclude it. I think it's probably an unintentional bias toward, you know, you know, private, a public sector versus private. So I'm trying to make it a little more enticing to someone in the private sector. Certainly all of these things are good things, there's nothing negative about it, but I think we might exclude some good candidates with this language. And going forward even on pages sixteen, working style, skills, knowledge and abilities, first bullet point, accustomed to a community role as a leader, participant in community affairs, a person to establish positive welcome communications with citizens at City Hall. Well, if you're in the private sector, you may not have had that experience at City Hall. Then, it's an admirable characteristic of our style, a lab to propose the third point, to working with city council, key boards and commissions, citizen groups, while attending to the separate roles of policy administration. All these are good things, they're not bad, but there's got to be more of, in my opinion, more of enticement or more language in here that entices a private sector. That's my only comment. And that's it. When I get past those bullet points, everything else is fine.
These are targeted very, very much so. If somebody were to call this task, yeah, is Mr. Robertson, he supplied these, right?
Yes, these are, these are his, yes.
Good, because you have a problem with shifting around a bit. I mean, I've seen ads that are not this specific in city manager magazines. I mean, they start out with relevant experience without nailing certain things down as city's relevant, related to, but not exactly City Hall kind of a situation where you call it out particularly. Perhaps we can work that over, so that in mind, realizing that these other segments could be interesting. Instead of saying, instead of making this look like this is exactly what we want, we go back to the original part where it says, this is an ideal candidate. Well, somehow maybe address the concept of ideal with another term instead of ideal. This almost says the perfect candidate. Say something, I'm sure, we could come up with some words, essentially this is what we're talking about, but a combination of these things, not necessarily everything. You know, I've seen ads that have been a lot fuzzier than this specific type, like I say, specifically in ICMA magazines, where they're fuzzier.
Mayor, this absolutely is, it's a draft, that's why it's a draft. You guys can modify this however you want. This is really your document that you're going to have to own and this is really what you desire as a consensus of council at least to have in the next city manager. So absolutely, it can be modified however you want to do it. Certainly if you wanted to say, you know, that in all or at least a majority of the following categories, you can certainly add that qualifier language in there as well.
Now I have a question for you. There's something that we've been talking about, Lori and I, and it may fit into this very well. There's this company that's related to recruiting, but they get into the candidate's skill sets, mental sets, tendencies towards things that you can't pull out and interview or on a piece of paper. These folks also have a session, I don't know if they offered that to you, where council people would sit in a room and say, here's what we want, not exactly this, but here's what we want, this little nuance of, and basically list all of these things and then get council's opinions on this to find out if this is a must-have, or it's a nice-to-have, or it's a throwaway item, instead of going lockstep with this kinds of, this exact kind of public employee kind of situation. If you say you want someone with a salesman's personality, this doesn't say that at all. If you want that, they can incorporate that sort of thing. Maybe Lori can talk a little bit more about some of their, some of the things they wanted to offer. Now I probably jumped a little bit too far ahead at this point, but I think it fit this comment, this criticism.
I'll be short and sweet, maybe under the experience, have a little bit more information there stating that these things are desirable but not exclusive to the candidate. Was that clear enough, Wade, or do you think that's not good enough?
Too much extensive working knowledge of municipal, public, and public, and public. That's what does it for me. I could even go along with him, I agree, well, experience with state legislators, administrative agencies, you know, I've done some of that in the private sector as well, but not a lot. But that second bullet point just kills it for me as a private sector potential candidate.
Well, I can see where, even in the military, there are public, it's almost like government building units, where some individual officer or various types of officers could have that type of community and not specifically be working in the city. Nation building concepts.
Mayor Proton McKinnon?
Well, I have to say when I read this, I thought that it was a great job of kind of putting together, you know, a snapshot of our community and the good, the bad, the ugly, I thought it was done in a great way and I really thought that it emphasized so many of the positives. I think sometimes when we're dealing with all the issues at city council, we forget to look at the big picture and see the positives. So I think that Mr. Robertson did a very nice job of putting that all together and giving a good snapshot of our community that would invite the ideal candidate. That being said, I thought, you know, when I read this, it, these things that are listed here beginning on page fifteen, under the heading of the ideal candidate, in my mind, they're not mutually exclusive. So I didn't, I didn't look at it as a checklist, do you have these things, if you don't bother. Maybe the wording could be a little bit different, do you see, do you see yourself having these skills or something to that effect where it kind of might interest them on one level, but not, I can't imagine meeting this person that would be able to satisfy every one of these requirements. And if Mr. Robertson can bring us that person, that would be wonderful, because I think when you look at what's asked here or what we're kind of outlining as our ideal candidate, it would be something that is pretty well-rounded. That being said, if it's really just the word public in there, maybe to refine it and make it more about, you know, public or business or, you know, government, so that you're highlighting all three of those things that we're looking for, or finding a way to make sure that it's understood that these are not mutually exclusive, that you have to have every one of them to consider applying. But I have a little bit of a concern in kind of changing mid-course on what we're doing because we were asked specifically as a council, give direction, who do you want to hear from? How do you want to do this? We're going to schedule the appointments. So everyone was very well aware that we would go in and meet, that Mr. Robertson was going to meet with other groups in the community. I know when he was here, he went around, checked things out, talked to staff. So I knew that I went in and got to say what I wanted to say, but that I also knew every other council member was going to go in and give their perspective. And I'm assuming that we paid him to go through all of that commentary and come up with what he thought was a consensus. So I'm a little bit concerned about changing course now at this point and also really going through and saying, there might be something in here that I didn't say, or maybe I don't necessarily wholeheartedly agree, is something that we need to have or would even like to have, but I don't know if I really feel comfortable knocking some of those things out. If there's a way to modify the language, so it's a little bit more inclusive and not using the word public, public, public everywhere, I could see doing that, but I'm a little bit concerned about kind of scrapping this and starting over, or even sitting down and saying, you know, I don't know, I'm just concerned about changing the course and I think it's a time issue as well.
Mayor, if I just really quickly, what you may do, and again, this is just, if you decide, instead of the and, you could put an or, or intergovernmental relations. That may be making it a little more palatable for you. You wouldn't have to have all of those, but when you put or there, you don't require all of that, so.
Just a suggestion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Instead of the and, and the second bullet point under experience, the very, the second to the last line where it says and, instead you would replace that with or.
Well, oh, did you have something to say?
On that same paragraph, I mean, I guess we can take out the word extensive, but a working knowledge of fund accounting, which is very similar to municipal accounting, but you could also get somebody from the nonprofit sector, the military sector is also basically fund accounting.
Yeah, I have a real issue with municipal accounting. I just talked municipal outside accounting, if you want to put fund accounting in it, that's fine. Where would you put the or again?
Instead of the and, it would replace the and in the second to the last line in the second bullet.
Or, or intergovernmental relations, instead of the and, intergovernmental relations.
You said it's okay?
That's it, no. I just, I was trying to get your attention that you're reading that.
I'm sorry.
Anyway, what if we took the, you just took the public safety, public works and utilities, public policy out of that first statement, the second statement, just made it fund accounting management, financial management, even resources, you know, all that other stuff's going to be in there. Somebody's going to apply for this job, they're going to have all, mostly out of their experience.
If you took our public safety, public works and utilities, public policy development, the sentence read, working knowledge of fund accounting and financial management, human resources management, business recruitment, retention practice.
You got or, just government relations, because again, you would have government relations. Can I make it a little bit more generic where you could let that go?
Just, just to address your comment, I think from the very beginning, I made it clear and other members of this council made it perfectly clear, that we wanted someone to at least be considered with private sector experience. And when I met with Mr. Robertson, I couldn't have made that clear. And this doesn't reflect that. So I don't think I'm changing in midstream at all. I think I'm consistent and this has to change. I don't know what the other people think, but in my opinion, it's, we're going the right direction here, but we're not changing in midstream. Been clear from day one.
I'd also said that I would like to see a candidate that has extensive knowledge about constitutional government, because I think that it's important that we bring governments back to their constitutional duties and the actual role of government. And that's not in here in any place that I can see. I didn't have a long time to read this, but I haven't seen anything like that in here and I think that's important.
Mayor, I didn't mean changing midstream what you're asking for, I just meant the process. I felt a little bit uncomfortable with scrapping the process and starting over essentially. I'm absolutely under the impression that we'll be making changes to this and I'm fine with that, I just changed the process.
I don't see us changing the process at all, we're following the process. I don't, I don't get that change in the process. We've agreed with what they're doing. Ninety percent of this is right. I think you did an excellent job of selling the city and being fair about it. It's just we get down to this candidate, I don't think we change the process, we're trying to identify the experience that we're looking for. And if you leave this language the way it is, and I think our city manager concurs, that this can be written differently and still have the same result, but won't exclude private sector people, because I think there's a certain bias in here, no doubt. Now I read this, this jumps right out at me toward the public sector.
Councilman Teague?
Under the education professional development, I think to put an or someplace in there in, if you're running a quarter million dollar, you know, business or whatnot, nonprofit, you know, you may not be, you may not be a member of a professional government organization and I don't think that excludes you from this.
Did you want a guy to run a quarter million dollar business running the city of Troy?
I don't know, how much?
I don't.
No?
I'm just saying, I don't.
It was a hypothetical.
My answer's not hypothetical, mine's pretty solid.
Okay, well, that's, that's okay.
But we, you know, I can review it, but for somebody who has, it's a pretty dubious job, it's a huge job. I know what you're saying.
No, no, you're, you're trying to steer with my words and something they weren't. And I think, I think you just have to have that there, so if someone doesn't have exactly the right criteria, we're trying to prevent people from de-selecting themselves. Let's get the resume and let's see what they have to offer. They may not be the right person.
So are you suggesting a and/or?
I'd say quarter million.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm like 250 million, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry.
What's the bullet point, right?
I apologize, I realize I just said quarter million. That wouldn't be a good idea.
Did you mean to add an and/or between active membership and training with the professional government organizations and/or business professional organizations? Would that be appropriate?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, just so that I make sure that we get that change, what was that?
The third bullet point under education and professional development, we would, we exercise in the second line, active membership and training with the professional government organizations, instead of that karma, have and/or business professional organizations.
So consensus?
Do we, question, do we need training with professional government organizations in there? Do we leave that out?
So just have active membership?
This is an or, I think, I think it's, okay.
Okay, leave it in.
Yeah, okay.
So is there any other discussion on the fact that I would like to see some constitutional knowledge, some constitutional government knowledge? That something that might be desirable in a city manager?
I never know exactly what that means, because to use a point of reference, every member of the Supreme Court thinks they understand the Constitution, but I guarantee they don't think they all understand the Constitution. And so I think, I agree with what you're saying, but I think understanding the whole of their local government and so forth, I think we'll be able to see, see that in their actions rather than they check a box saying, I like the bill of rights and so forth. I think we'll be able to see that in what they've done, so.
Which brings to mind, I might like to see an advertisement in Hillsdale College News Imprimis. I'm not sure that they advertise, but that would be a place where we might find a good business person with a constitutional background.
Could you give us a cost on what these things are going to be?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that they don't have advertisements in Imprimis, but I-
I'd like to break down the cost of trainings and somebody better ideas that are being brought up here.
Any other comments, discussion?
Are there any typographical things?
Yeah.
Somebody told me there are some typographical things and I don't want to get bogged down in a grammar discussion, but perhaps that can be something that's discussed individually. I'm just bringing this up.
Is the timing on this?
We'll come back and then we'll see a finished document.
Now what is the timing on this, Attorney Blom?
Well, again, it all depends on you. This is one that I think that he would have really, if there were consensus on this and if there were just minor tweaks, then he would like to get that out there quicker than have, and then just ratify it, it's your next city council meeting.
Make sure it's proofread done.
Yeah.
There are some typographical.
There are.
Is this something he's mailing to candidates? Is this, oh, this is okay?
Yes, yes, and it'll be on our webpage and on their webpage and he's already, the ad is already out there and it references the position profile will be available, so the quicker that we get it out there, the better we look.
So as far as places that we're talking about getting a sense, MML is obviously, we'll have it or has it already. ICMA has it. Looking at Crane's as far as pricing and, you know, what's feasible and then something by the DOD or maybe an appropriate publication.
Wall Street Journal.
I don't, I mean.
If you're going to get all your shoes, then Wall Street Journal. Lori?
Could, maybe you touch base with him and ask him what he's going to be doing and then get that to us.